Decal City Council Meeting of January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three to order. A roll call, please.
Morris?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Eight i.
Awesome. And now Agenda Item B, Pledge of Allegiance. Can we have Shadow, Mr. Hy-Vee, lead us in the pledge shadow?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Shadow. All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, approval of the agenda. I take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight i.
All right, the agenda has been approved. Moving on to Presentations, Agenda Item D, we have none. And then moving on to Agenda Item E, Public Participation, we have one, Mark Charvat. And as a reminder, you have three minutes for public participation.
All right, I would like to address the issue on Fairview Drive. We have a new device in place supposedly to assist in the flow of traffic there. But unfortunately, for those of you who've seen it or driven through there, a lot of the neighbors just don't like it. It's not what they were asking for. And I think our Alderman of the Fourth Ward needs to perhaps have another ward meeting to discuss what can further be done. There's a really neat site called Neighborhood that deals with local issues specifically, so people can really focus on local things going on nearby. And, Mr. Perkins, your neighbors are none too happy with the current condition of Monticello and Fairview. Recently, as seen on the site, there is a issue where a vehicle has already run over that stretch of roadway. There are tire marks on the lawn of one of the houses at Monticello already. The little stop signs have been knocked down. Individuals who wrote on Neighborhood's site have written such things, and I'll summarize: These are your neighbors, Mr. Perkins. Darren writes, as someone who crosses the intersection with my dog every day, I can say that something definitely needed to be done, and I appreciate the effort, but whoever, whatever genius thought this was a good idea, seriously needs to reconsider their career path. For starters, there is not enough light at the intersection at night. You drive by there all the time, Mr. Perkins, you should know. Even with the dinky reflective signs, you can't see the islands that well in good weather. Moving on. Rita writes, she lives in Fairview South. Nope, I hate it. Already had a flat tire and serious damage to my daughter's car. You can see track marks all the time, on and off, where people have misjudged their turn. Susan writes, I don't like it at all. So many times I've seen people run right through the stop sign, not even seeing it or remembering that it is there. One night, there was a car that tried to stop when it was slippery and ended up in a ditch and had to call a tow truck. It is definitely a hazard. Danica, who lives in the Neighborhood, writes, I didn't know it was there. One snowy day, didn't see it, drove over it, and thought I bent my rim. This is causing a lot of damage to people's vehicles. The intention was good. We should have started off with just stop signs at Monticello and a stop sign also at Heritage. But no, we went this route, we had the ward meeting, the design does not match what we were looking at. This is not what people in your ward expected. People are not happy with it, and these are comments from your neighbors. I invite you, Mr. Perkins and the mayor, and also city staff, to look at the Neighborhood site and see what your neighbors think of this. They don't like it. It needs to change.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item G, Approval of the Minutes. We have one minute submitted by the city clerk.
This is the mayor. A citizen put in to speak on the end of the Capitol Record Secretary.
I do not have that.
I gave you everything that I got.
Who's the citizen? Yes, ma'am? Well, and you filled out a form?
I did.
Okay.
I did. I do not have a mayor.
This is further, perfect example of the issue we have before us. Ma'am, you can go ahead. I'm not going to let the issue of how he turned it in be an issue for you to speak, so please, go ahead.
Sure, you can.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I know this is about an issue later, but I can't stay related tonight. So I'm here to talk about, I know that one of the issues later tonight is about the Senior Center, whether you're going to sell it or redevelop it. And I just thought that it was interesting because I attend Northwest Medicine and get emails and things with them all the time about how to improve your health. And just last week, and I printed it for you, it said something about how, for seniors, how to improve their life, especially for people, how to live past eighty, but to get to that stage. The first item was to have an active lifestyle, and the Senior Center provides yoga classes, exercise classes, all kinds of classes to get them physically moving. They have arts and crafts to get them physically done. It says, second thing is to challenge yourself mentally. There's tons of card games, and I play Mahjong. There's people, we get together and play Pea Knuckle. We get together, and there's several bridge groups. All of these people are constantly involved in doing things mentally to enhance themselves. It says, one of the big things it says is to be a social butterfly, and what better place? And you can see all the seniors that are here. I'm sure you would raise your hand, that you agree that it's a great place to go to improve mental, physical, and to socially be active. They provide great services for all the seniors for free. Where else can we do this? So hopefully, you will really consider our mental and physical well-being and all of the people that attend there. I'm sure Kate will tell you how many people are there on the average every day. It is very important to all of us to have somewhere to go. So, you know, I personally, my husband and I both go there several times a week. So, you know, that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments, ma'am. What's that?
Do you want a copy of this from Northwest?
Sure, yeah, you can bring it up here.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item F, Appointments. We have none? Oh, we were at minutes, sorry. So Agenda Item G, one minute submitted by the city clerk, we have none. Minutes submitted by the recording secretary. Those are the minutes of the regular city council meeting of December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Favor. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight i.
All right, the minutes have been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item H, the Consent Agenda. Number one, Accounts Payable and Payroll through December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two in the amount of two million, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and eleven cents. Number two, Accounts Payable and Payroll through January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three in the amount of one million, five hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixteen cents. Number three, Investment and Bank Balance Summary through November, two thousand and twenty-two. Four, Year-to-Date Revenues and Expenditures through November, two thousand and twenty-two. Five, Freedom of Information Act FOIA Report, November, two thousand and twenty-two. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight i.
All right, the consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item I, Public Hearings, we have none tonight. And now Agenda Item J, Considerations. Pausing. Eight one. All right, public participation comes first before we bring it to the, yeah, okay. So, we have quite a few people who wanted to speak tonight on J-one. If something was already said and you don't feel the need to go ahead and restate, by all means, you can just let the previous comments hold. We are listening to everyone that comes up here. We have a huge agenda of items tonight that we want to get through, but I want to make sure everyone has the opportunity to get heard. But again, if someone already said exactly what you wanted to say and you feel comfortable with it, just let me know, and I'll skip to the next person. So the first person we have is Lydia Rush.
At three.
All right, Lydia, come on up. You've got to come up to the podium. And also, I have to hold everyone to three minutes because we have people that, yeah, we have people that abuse that, so I've had to standardize upon the amount of time that people have for public.
I'm here to support the senior citizen community. As a person who relocated here after leaving here thirty-five years and returned back because I love Decal, Illinois, I'm totally amazed of what is happening to our community. I thought that this was a hospitable community and a community that put their residents before a developer. They used to do that, but now they don't. I can see that from what I have seen in the changes of Decal. But my concern is, why are we taking away from senior citizens? I'm seventy-four years old. I retired, and I came back to live here, to live a good and healthy life. And the senior citizen community, and the senior citizen place has helped me, keep me active, informed, and also has given me a life that I can prosper from and live longer. And I think all of us here are going to be senior citizens. If you're not a senior citizen now, you're going to become a senior citizen. And let me tell you, you're going to want to find a place where you're going to socialize and be able to talk to people of the same caliber as you and also with the same experiences. And I believe that, and this is what I was told because I was called at the last minute and I didn't know it, that they want to turn it into a parking lot? You're going to take away from senior citizens something that is valuable to them, something that will improve their life and let their life expand. But that is, and let me tell you about my experience. I was a property manager in California with one of the biggest, biggest property managements, associate from Texas and Ennui-Jaski. And I know, I've dealt with developers, so I know about developing. It's profit, and basically, that's it. You want to do it for profit, you vote for it. But if you want to care about the citizens of Decal and the elderly, then you vote no. Period.
I wish everything was that simple, but you'll hear our discussion in a little bit. So Cheryl Coleman, if you want to approach the podium?
Yes, my concern is over the senior building also. I've been going there probably about eleven years now. I know people in the past, seniors, that are a lot older than you are or that I am, but they all know it is our senior place, and that's a place to meet and greet other people and instead of being in our homes alone and that. I feel if our city felt good enough to support us for forty years, what is wrong with our continued support? I just feel sad that you're thinking of tearing our building down that we need as a whole. We all need it.
Thank you, ma'am. And then I have Nancy Doherty. Nancy?
First of all, I'm going to correct my name. My name is Nancy Dougherty.
Sorry about that.
That's okay, because it looks like Doherty, but it is really Dougherty. I moved to Decal about a year ago. My brother worked for DCFS for about thirty-five years. One of the reasons I came back was to be with family. However, I am just myself. And I, my one question to my brother was, where do I go to meet people? I'm going to be eighty years old this year, and I need to be active. And I think you've heard this from the two people who spoke before, because without activity, we're going to sit home, and what's going to happen to us? So we really need things to do. I attend Decal fifty-five three days a week. I have an opportunity to sit and talk to people and learn things. I have an opportunity to play bingo, which I never thought I'd ever do, but I do. And we have an opportunity to watch some movies, go on some trips, be together and be active. And in conjunction with the other people who spoke, believe me, wait until you're that age. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, with that, I would take a motion to bring the consideration of proposals for the rehabilitation and redevelopment of three thirty Grove Street and two seventeen South Forest Street to the floor.
Do you want to move?
Second.
What? Oh, I thought you said something. So I have a motion by Alderman Favor and a second by Alderman Verbic. City Manager?
Thank you. So this matter involves one city tax parcel, three lots, and two buildings. And I want to address why this is before you tonight and correct some misassumptions that have been already articulated tonight, and then invite your consideration of proposals that were solicited at your direction in recent months. So what we're talking about here, I mentioned two buildings. One is, has been known for a long time as three thirty Grove Street, and that's the big yellow brick building that, back in the early sixties, was built for the U.S. Post Office. The post office that we know now is, is just a couple blocks to the east. It outgrew this particular location. And in the nineteen eighties, the city took ownership of this building, and from the early eighties to the present, it has served at no cost, no rent, no utility costs, a number of social service agencies, most recently a family service agency, which has, for quite a while, been the principal behind the Senior Center also, which many of you have been speaking to. And also Meals on Wheels, which was in cooperation with the Voluntary Action Center, which stopped serving those meals out of that particular location back in summer, early fall. Additionally, there is a food bank that has operated out of the parking area and inclement weather just inside the building. And the Youth Service Bureau, which is another longtime local social service agency. So for forty-plus years, the city has owned this particular building. There is a building just to the south, which is known as two seventeen South Forest Street. And that was built for private purposes. It was an office, served office uses for a while, then it became a fitness center. And then in the eighties, about the same time that the city bought the yellow brick building, it brought, bought this building. There's no Yellow Brick Road here, by the way. And, and for quite a while, it was the home of the city's various community development offices, including the building department. And then back in the fall of two thousand and fourteen, the city stopped housing its community development there, brought it back into the old city hall, which was at two hundred South Forest Street, as the city hall, housing of the police department changed as the police department moved to further west on Lincoln Highway, so there was more space, and all of the city offices were in one place, the one-stop shopping concept. So, so what? Well, for forty years, the one building and for a long time, almost as long, the two seventeen location have been solely the city's to, not just to own and operate, but also to maintain. So that means roofs and boilers and carpet and all the, and HVAC and electrical and plumbing and all the rest that goes with it. To my knowledge, we have not been compensated for any of that. As we got to about this time last year, as we were surveying city properties, I had to report that we were looking at some very significant expenses. The roof on the property at three thirty Grove where the Senior Center is was going to need to be replaced in another year or two. The boiler had failed a couple of times. The HVAC systems, which are on the roof of that building and also two seventeen, had failed several times in the previous year, and we have gotten them going and so forth. Coincidentally, just over the weekend, the, it was called the brain box for the boiler that supports three thirty Grove, the whole building, gave out, and there haven't been any parts made like that since two thousand and ten. And Andy Rye, who's the Assistant Director of Public Works in charge of facilities and streets, and his crew found a suitable replacement, not the same part, that will last for a while, I'm told. We don't know. It's not designed to operate that particular boiler. And so that's, as a property owner, that is your challenge and dilemma. We have heretofore, over the years, asked for some support so we could build a sinking fund for large expenses like this. We do not have such a fund. We've never been offered anything from any of the agencies using these facilities. Whatever good works they do, whatever kind citizens such as these people who are here tonight and others may be served, there has been no source other than general revenue from the city for this. All right. So the city charged me back in May to notify the agencies that were still operating. Two seventeen had been vacant for some time. We repurposed it in two thousand and twenty-one as, as the Belonging Center, as you know. So we are well aware of the condition in there, and, and that that roof had probably another four or five years. We were patching it, keeping it going. The HVAC had given out a few times. We were repairing that. But the biggest, most tired building was certainly three thirty Grove. And as one of the proposals tonight, I think illustrates, which identified two hundred thousand dollars as, as a reasonable guess at this point of what the cost would be to, to fix some of the, the issues with, with HVAC and other systems, I think you can see why the council asked me to notify the tenants that by the end of the year, the city would be looking for proposals that could come from the tenants using the buildings, but proposals to either buy or otherwise redevelop those parcels. The city wanted to get out of the landlord business, and I think I'm representing the council accurately on that. So I took that seriously in early November, put together an RFP. We advertised that RFP. We got four responses. As my background goes into greater detail on this, but one response was, was not, as they say in these matters, responsive. It was an interested demolition firm that really didn't care to redevelop or be an actor in this process, but just wanted to let us know that they demolished businesses, buildings, if somebody wants to demolish a building, here's a price for the two buildings. So I had to discount that. It did not, it did not satisfy the intent of the RFP, which is to identify the future uses of two seventeen and three thirty by somebody else, either by redevelopment or by, by purchase and then rehabilitation. So the first one that I have listed here for you tonight was listed, was, was offered by Brian Fleming. His principal firm right now is American Dream Tax. He proposes to start a new LLC called Decal Business Group. He intends to, by his proposal, to purchase and manage both of the buildings, keep them intact, manage them for commercial office purposes for rent. He proposes to house his own financial services and tax return office in one of the two buildings, and also is interested in incorporating a daycare care center and an, and probably two seventeen, he didn't specify which building, developing an incubator for small businesses, particularly those minority businesses that are looking around the area or already established in the area. His proposal came with a check for a hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of the two buildings, and he, he did not provide a certified check, which we had asked for, for twenty percent of the proposal price, but his, his proposal would be, well, it's before you tonight, so you can decide whether that was disqualifying or not. The Family Service Agency proposed, and I want to clarify something, after the council agenda went out, I talked to Tanisha Clay, who is the executive director and her staff, and they meant to include two seventeen. Two seventeen was, was not mentioned in the proposal I received from them, but their intent is to purchase both buildings for a dollar because they identified a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of cost that they feel would at least go into three thirty. It was not identified whether any of that would go into two seventeen. In their own words, they would main, quote, "maintain programming and services currently provided." That includes Club Fifty-Five, a food pantry, a thrift shop, warming and cooling center and so forth, and probably expand the services extended for our local youth, the drop-in center, youth mentoring services, and some summer programs that were not specified but were identified as a whole. And the FSA did provide a certified check for twenty percent of that retention amount. So that's the FSA proposal. Pappas Development presented a proposal, which was to purchase the properties for a hundred thousand dollars, no contingencies, no financial incentives from the city. The intention is to preserve the one-story building at two seventeen South Fourth, remodel it to meet the expectations of commercial office or not-for-profits that are looking for office space, and there are quite a number of those in, in our area. For the yellow brick building, the larger building at three thirty Grove, to demolish that structure, prepare the lot for a drive-through, not, not a parking lot, a drive-through business. There's a concept plan in your background, which illustrates how that could be laid out. There, there are tweaks that could be made, of course, depending on what that business might be. There's also additional parking that would be provided for employees that walk in guests. The goal is to attract a national brand that would serve the downtown and surrounding residential properties, as well as any visitors and shoppers to our area. And so that brings us to the recommendation that I made in my background, and I'm going to repeat tonight because I think it's important that, that we consider what the present and long-term realities are for these two buildings. They're both very tired. I think the proposal that comes closest to addressing the issues in two seventeen is Mr. Pappas's. And also, the, the issue, I've been through the building at three thirty Grove. It's more than tired. I already addressed the, the boiler, which, which is a major expansion. When I say major, I'm talking about a hundred thousand plus. And then the roof is probably fifty, sixty, and then there's a heating, cooling problem, or cooling problem, excuse me, the heating problem is the boiler. And when you add all that up, and it needs coats of paint throughout, new carpet, the bathroom facilities are not handicap accessible throughout, and so another hundred thousand is a very small amount to, to add to those totals. And I, I'm concerned also that the people being served are not being well-served by that space. The city has extended every year for at least as long as that building has been in our, in our ownership, annually, through our human services budget, a minimum of a hundred and fifty thousand, and in the last two years, two hundred thousand was increased, to social service agencies to do what they do. So surely, those who are serving in this, in the building at three thirty Grove have been receiving a subsidy from the city, not just in the building, but the opportunity to do some cost shifting within their own organization, to find ways to, to house people who are currently served there in other places. I think it is a lack of imagination to think the only place in Decal where seniors can be served, and I'm a senior, I'm going to be seventy-five this year, is there. It's just illogical and quite concerning to me that that is how we are serving our citizens. So I recommend the redevelopment there. There are lots of spaces in this town that are vacant right now that would serve as drop-in centers, activity centers, and so forth. And not only do we give two hundred thousand dollars a year in human service budgeting, our CDBG organization gives to Family Service Agency, to Youth Services Bureau, to twenty other social service agencies every year, upward to a half a million dollars to do what they do. That means that they can not have to spend that money so they can do something else. So when I hear people say, you are, you're turning your back on the old, you're turning your back on the poor, you're turning your back on the hungry, I say ridiculous. back on the poor, you're turning your back on the hungry," I say ridiculous. There is no other town our size in northern Illinois that gives the rate at which we give to people who otherwise can't do it for themselves. That's what I have to say.
City Council.
I apologize. I need to recuse myself.
Other council members? Yes, Alderman Larson.
I too am a senior citizen, and I have to agree with Bill. I've been in those buildings because I was on Family Service Agency Board 20 years ago, 23 years ago, anyways. And if I was coming into this city, I think that we should do so much better for you. And that's, I think, if, it's kind of like when banks turn you down for a mortgage because it like overextends. And I know a no vote will be like, "We're turning our backs on you." But I agree with Bill that it also will be, let's figure out what you can take, what we give this money, and find someplace better for you. I mean, there's, it's not like DeKalb is bursting at the seam and there's not one square foot of open property. And as long as you have a place, it doesn't encourage you to go look. And I'm just thinking, I'd like to see it better. And I don't think it's going to get better where it's at because the building, you're trying to take an old post office, and it's, and it's not, you know, I just think we can do better than this. And so that is why I guess I would vote for another use of this property, but not to be like, and good luck. I think the city will continue, as we have, trying to, you know, help locate and do whatever we can to make a transition easier. But I think, I think at 70, you deserve more. At 80, you deserve better. And I think that's...
Where do you go?
Well...
We have no place to go. We know that.
There's no place, there's, I guess, I haven't gone shopping for places. Okay.
Well, we have.
I'm by myself. My daughter's gone. I don't have that much money. Only place I have is the senior center. Otherwise, I'm by myself. And then you get into yourself like, okay.
And I understand that.
And seniors all feel that way too.
Let's...
To understand our side.
Let's...
You have no place else to go. Get it through your head?
It's, but is, what, my question to you is...
Let's not, we'll go back and forth with the audience that we have tonight. So I guess just to clarify, we have the executive director here from FSA. There's, the senior center shuts down if we make this vote to not sell it to you for a dollar. There's no, there's no place established or determined.
There are incredible struggles, I may not...
Oh, yeah, to the mic.
Tanisha Clay, Executive Director of Family Service Agency. I want to clarify one thing. Family Service Agency has gotten $12,000 the past year from City of DeKalb. So it's, we don't get hundreds of thousands of dollars from the City of DeKalb. CDBG funds, we did help facilitate rental assistance for the community. That was not a profit to Family Service Agency. To operate the senior center, we get $12,000 a year. So that does not afford us to go anywhere else. That being said, as far as going other places, there are one other option at this time, but we would have to significantly decrease our services. And as you can see, you guys had to pull out chairs and fill the room, and there's only a small fraction of our seniors here tonight. So that would be, it would decrease and drop services significantly. Yeah.
I guess I wanted to vote for the Club Fifty-Five. I know people who go to it, and I know people who appreciate it. I was very disappointed when I read that you were offering a $1 bid. If the building is so valuable, why are we only offering a dollar? We understand that you don't have $100,000.
Absolutely.
Or $2 million. But a dollar is almost an insulting offer. We couldn't buy property anywhere in the world for a dollar.
And I agree with you 100%, and I appreciate that. That was a board vote, and I'll be honest, we went back and forth about that numerous times. In essence, you know, you guys have provided this to us free of charge for over 40 years, and knowing that we have to, as Bill said, put $100,000 into the boiler system and all of those other things versus coming to the city council saying, "Donate it to us." I mean, that was kind of the option of the board and the recommendation of the attorneys. So...
So I'll tell you, the reason why we don't want to spend the money on it is because it's not worth it to put it into an older building. That's, the thought process is that it's not a good investment. And we appreciate that we are doing more than just managing investments and managing money here. But that is one of the factors that we have to factor in, and that is something that I've struggled with, with this vote, because on the one hand, I want to help out everybody. It's in my wort, want to see it continue. I know so many people that enjoy it. And on the other hand, it's a financial issue. And the $1 bid, frankly, I just found that to be like, this property is super valuable to us, please give it to us, please give it to us. What's it worth? A buck.
I think it's worth more than a dollar, and as we tried to, you know, state, it's worth all of this for your community, for your constituents. And I do want to comment real quick, Ms. Larson, I wish you would have had an opportunity to walk through the senior services side. While we do need a roof and we do need HVAC and those things, we have made significant improvements in that building and that side of the building in the past years, and I think it's much better than it probably was 20 years ago when maybe you had went through it. It had, I will give it to you, the section that Youth Service Bureau was in, and that's where Bill and I recently walked through, and I know he's probably walked through the other side, needs significant work, carpet, paint, all of that. But the section in which Elder Care, or, I'm sorry, VAC and Family Service Agency was operating was well taken care of.
Yes, Solomon, favor.
Can I just ask you a question? So if the city were to give this property to you for a dollar, as Bill said, we've already had, you know, issues. So we're in the middle of winter, how, what's your plan to keep the door open, heat on?
So we have bid for, to modernize the boiler system. So we would, in essence, take out mortgage loan to improve, make the improvements that are necessary to be made to be able to continue operating as is.
Yeah, thank you.
Council? Yes?
Man, I don't know, should I recuse myself with my association with...
Providing services.
VAC is no longer operating out of there.
All right, okay, we're fine. I think Kate was here, Erin's here, Cheryl's here, I know. You know, I work with him a lot. This is a tough one. It really is, it really is. I was just in the building, I don't know, a couple weeks ago, Erin? You didn't, you never emailed me back, by the way. You know, I truly understand, but I, you know, as my mom is 90, my aunt is 101, my aunt, where she lives, has no senior services. So yes, it's extremely important, but I do think, you know, I don't know if VAC is going down the right path with this building. I think the money would be better spent on something better for everybody. I really do. I mean, I, you know, I'm getting up there, as my wife says, and, you know, so it's hard. Like you said, I, VAC worked out of that building for the congregate site, which is extremely important. COVID threw a wrench in that whole process, as we all know, and I don't see a light at the end of that tunnel anytime soon. I mean, I think everybody here would agree that I, I'm kind of looking through the crowd of, we need to find a better spot, a better home, if you will.
Best part of home now.
I understand, but it's like throwing money, you know, I don't want to see the money thrown away. I don't want to see you guys throw the money away. I'm really torn. I really am. I, you know, I don't know what more to say. I'm caught smack in the middle of this one. I think it really bothers me a lot. But yeah, that's it, Mayor.
Alderman, Alderman Perkins.
I guess this is more for FSA. So if I understand this correctly, there's $100,000 for repairs. Have you guys looked at another location? What does that look like?
To the podium. You got to come up to the podium, sorry. That way everyone at home can hear as well.
So the biggest challenge for us is we have been operating this rent-free. So to go somewhere, we would have to pay rent for that level of square footage is too significant for our budget. It's not something that we have the capacity to do. Elder Care Services has offered us the use of some space that they have that is about 50% of the size of the space that we're occupying, not counting the VAC space that we were using, so the large kitchen area. So we would, again, have to decrease services by about 50% in capacity. So about 50% of the seniors that attend the site would not be able to attend due to capacity.
Okay.
And that is a, and just to be completely honest, that's a rent-free option at this point with some utilities. But again, it just, in our hearts, taking away 50% of our seniors can't come on a daily basis. You know, where do we make that? Do we just have a count at the door, and once we get to that count, "Sorry, you can't come"?
So then, then you're prepared to, for all the capital requirements this place is going to need then?
So when, again...
So I guess what assurances are there with that? Because it sounds like it's serious renovation that it needs.
Yeah, like I said, we anticipated about $200,000 in the things that we looked at that would repair the main things, the HVAC, the roofing and any, the boiler. So again, the agency is prepared to take out a mortgage on those. As we all know, mortgage payments and interest rates are a lot cheaper than paying monthly rent and trying to rent somewhere. So that is something that we felt that we could handle from a financial standpoint.
Okay.
As you know, I don't know if you all know, we just, you know, in 2019 renovated the bank building, the old bank building at 1325 Sycamore Road. So we've been through a capital campaign. That's not something that we can do again so soon. It's just, the atmosphere is not right for us to do those things. So we have to do something that's financially secure for us. And 200 to $300,000 of mortgage to make these repairs and improvements for the life of us having that building was more feasible than us trying to pay a, you know, significant monthly rent somewhere else.
Okay, thank you.
Just before that, just to clarify too, like, I'm a commercial building owner, and oh my gosh, you know, when you rethink it, just all the costs, you're not thinking about what you know because you own a building now. But boy, with the age of that building, besides the roof, besides the boiler, I'm assuming that cost is going to replace the air conditioning. The lot is just horrible. I mean, a million things can continue going wrong with that particular property just because of its age. And quite frankly, we've done a great job taking care of it, but it's also a lot of duct tape and baling wire that's kept that thing together. Just all those anticipated potentially additional costs, do you think you'd be able to absorb those? I mean, the mortgage is finite then. You got that money to fix those things, and that's it.
I mean, those are all things that we've taken into consideration, knowing that we would probably have to write additional grants, things come up for nonprofits, being a nonprofit. Just recently, had we already had this building, there was a $250,000 grant with the State of Illinois for, that we were eligible for, for improvements on property. We couldn't apply for that grant because we didn't already own the building. So again, just utilizing those resources that we do have for things like that, unfortunately, there's no grants around to pay for the rent and the mortgage. But for improvements and for maintaining those things, we do have, you know, abilities to seek those things out. And I completely know about those unexpected costs because we've had plenty of them at our newly renovated facility. And, you know, we suffered through this for years at 14 Health Services Drive, which is why we made the hard decision to leave Health Services Drive and purchase the bank and undergo the capital campaign and do everything that we did. So while, again, we were hesitant at first, I mean, I'll be quite honest with you, we know that that building needs a lot. We're not walking into this blindly. We're not, you know, going into here saying, "Oh, this is the best building in the world." But we know what it means to the community. As you know, Family Service Agency and Youth Service Bureau just merged. We know Youth Service Bureau was there. There's a lot of, you know, things that we can do and grow and enhance what was already being done there, in addition to the senior center, in addition to what you're hearing here tonight.
I just got a text that there's a broken window in my building right now. That's just great.
Someone ran over my sign.
Yeah. Alderman, favor.
And I can certainly understand where everyone's coming from is a place to go, the senior center. For me, the place to go was the YSB as a teenager for a number of years. That was the place for us to get together and really, with no one else at home at the time, ideal for me. You mentioned a mortgage. Have you considered mortgage for a new construction? Again, I'm thinking about your situation and how much better that money would be invested in new versus old property. And then is there anything, do we have any property to build on, or is there any kind of situation where we could help get involved even more than we do year in and year out? And I don't suspect that to change. You know, our support for FSA and all of you will continue. But again, I think as a city, what can we do to help beyond what we've done over the last 40 years responsibly to all of our taxpayers?
So to that comment, we had considered purchasing another building in addition. So again, having just gone through this in 2019, you have the cost to purchase the building, which is going to, no matter what, be in excess of $200,000 to $300,000, and then the cost of any renovations that have to occur within that. You know, we just underwent a $1.4 million line of credit that we're now, you know, with the capital campaign, but it was a two, over a $2 million renovation project. And knowing all the other capital campaigns and renovation projects and the cost of materials and any types of renovations there, we would be in excess of $1 million versus potentially the $200,000 to $300,000 that we'd be looking at for renovations and repairs here.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman, favor.
So I would just say, to your credit, obviously, you know that, either, you've lived in the building, so you know what the building's going to do. I just don't want to be the one to give you a white elephant, and that's my concern. And I think the rest of the council would share that as well, that if there is a better opportunity, if there, you know, it might be, you know, with the timing of this, that, you know, we're not looking longer term or whatever. I'm just concerned that if you make this decision, we've had other nonprofits come requesting, you know, to be given a building or whatever, and it turns out the funding wasn't there to complete the project. And that's what I don't want to have happen.
And that's why we're not going into this saying we're going to tear it down and rebuild it, because we know that's not feasible. We know that in this environment and atmosphere, a capital campaign, a renovation campaign is just not feasible in the situation that we think this community is in and our donors are in, they're tired right now of that. $30,000 community foundation donation, $20,000 to fix something, to repair something, those are things that we can do. Those are feasible, and we feel that we can do that. Again, we, we're not looking at this building and not seeing its flaws. Please know, we do see the flaws. We didn't have heat on Monday, so we know what we're looking at here. And that's why before we even made the proposal, we wanted to ensure that we knew what it would cost us minimally, just for the heat, because we knew that that was one of the biggest concerns that the building has had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman, Larson.
Okay, this, this might not be the platform, but I'm looking at a net-net City of DeKalb right now. So if we go with Family Service Agency, we have taken $99,999 away from possible income to the city. But wonder if we went with a developer, got the 100,000, and then that went back, gave you another 100,000 to start looking for a slightly better building. Yes, you're not going to get the perfect one, but even a slightly better building. So then your 200,000 will go even farther. Because I think what I'm hearing from all of us is we're like, "Oh, my God, this is, if you were my child, I'd be like, 'Don't buy that building.'" But, but net-net to the City of DeKalb citizens, we'd be the same. If we still let a developer, if we took that 100,000, but then gave it to you somehow legally to then have a better, you'd have more purchasing power. Could we do something like that?
City manager?
We could go in a lot of directions here. There is a tenant in Two Seventeen South Fourth that is looking for space. And just last week, talking to a local Realtor, I got half a dozen, just in one quick email, here's a half a dozen properties on the market right now that would more than accommodate what you're looking for, for the senior center, in newer space. Not new, but newer space. what you're looking for, for the Senior Center, in newer space. Not new, but newer space. So I don't say a hundred thousand. I say ten thousand to hire a Realtor to go out and do the work that we're just spitballing at.
Right.
We don't know the mark, you don't know what's available out there. Nobody here knows what. So it's a hire pro. Happy to help you do that. This could have been done by the way in May, but here we are. Let's wait, wait till the end, maybe they'll change their mind. And now we got it. Now, forget that, that you've provided all this for free for forty years. And what is it? What's the rent? What do you think? Two thousand dollars a month, maybe? That's not high at all for that size building. Twenty-four thousand a year, thirty thousand a year? What is that? Times forty? And in all that time, did anybody offer? Just before I started in two thousand eighteen, the people who have been using that space, with local social service agencies, were approached by the fellow who was the acting city manager at the time, would you be willing to spend something, anything, on rent or utility? Zero. Well, we've been here all this time, and I heard this tonight. Why don't you just keep giving? Why can't others, whose job it is to provide that direct service, think about this seriously in behalf of the people they're serving? You don't provide that direct service. I don't. Nobody on our staff does. We do other things. But we've been supporting that, that concept through our building. And we've been tireless in that. So now's the time for others to step up and do that. But we can help. Ten thousand dollars would go a long way to find space. And they could be moving in a month.
And as a city government, you provide services. You're looking for, for profit here?
So, so wait, wait. So, so first of all, first of all, this is, this, this is our meeting. We're having a discussion right now. We've solicited a lot of input, but we need, we need to have our discussion here. It's a public meeting, and that's what's awesome about this. You all get to see what we're thinking, where our heads at, and the discussion that we're actually having really open and honest right now. We are trying to figure this out. We are struggling with this. We've been, for forty years, providing this service. There are a lot of nonprofits that we don't provide that for. So let's talk about equity. Where, where does that stop? So if we're doing it for one, shouldn't we be doing it for a bunch of others then, is what it comes down to. So what we're trying to figure out, what we're trying to weigh here, is we've been doing this for a very long time. I agree. It is a building that I, I don't feel comfortable giving you because it's a train wreck. It is just, it, it's a hundred thousand here and there waiting to happen kind of thing. I love the idea of figuring out how we could be of assistance to help find a location, see what that might look like. Bill's right. This has been going on since May. I mean, you all are here tonight, but this conversation has been six, seven months that we've been trying to figure out, what are we going to do? What is best for the entire community? We are not landlords. We do not do this. We do streets. We do police. We do fire. We do not do this. We stroke annual checks from various grant funds to give to social services like Family Service Agency in order, that's what they do best. We provide dollars where we have them in order to do that. Part of this, when you talk about dollars, it is about dollars, because the City of DeKalb is run on sales tax. That is our primary go-to money to be able to do incredible things within this community. The more economic development could we create, the more sales tax we generate, the more dollars we have in our general fund. As Bill mentioned, we went from a hundred fifty thousand to two hundred thousand dollars that we're giving to social service agencies. If you read the whole agenda, right, we're, we're, we're stroking a check for twenty-five thousand dollars to Stagecoach, fifty thousand dollars to the Egyptian Theater, twenty-five thousand dollars to the Glidden Homestead, our, our, the history of our town, right? The, the heart of our town, one of our buildings, is in disrepair and needs some dollars. And we're stroking a check for twenty-five thousand dollars to help that. We're giving a hundred thousand dollars to the New Hope Missionary Baptist Church to start a children, or a community center. Like, if you think our heart is not there, this is the wrong audience. Our heart is absolutely there. What we have to do is we have to figure out, yeah, you know, I, I love the chuckling from the, from the man in front, who, that's all he does. Ultimately, what we're trying to do is we're trying to figure out what to do best with the taxpayers that we have, the dollars that we have for everyone. And that's the discussion that we're in right now. So a little bit of grace would definitely be appreciated. We are hearing, we are listening, and we are discussing it right now. What do we want to do that we think is gonna be in the best interest of the entire community, all taxpayers, based off of the role that the City of DeKalb has? So I'd like to continue the discussion a little bit. And I think City Manager, I can tell you're pretty impassioned about this, because we do work hard. This, this council, this staff has a huge heart, just like FSA, just like the social service companies, uh, agencies that we have in our community. This is one of the most big-giving communities out there. It's part of the reason I love living here. It's part of the reason why I love this role. I can be a part of everything that we're doing and all the greatness that's happening in the City of DeKalb. But there are times, there are hard decisions we have to make. There are times we have to make decisions on what we think is gonna be for the best interest overall. And we need to figure out how we can do it in a way that is fair and equitable to all citizens in the community, and in a way that we can be the most comfortable with. And that's the dialogue that we're having up here right now. So Alderman Larson was bringing up assistance to find, or assistance to help maybe offset costs of another facility built. I don't know if that was a, I, I don't know where you were coming with, with that ten thousand dollars. I don't know if that was-
Well, a hundred thousand we don't have. We would have if we sold, but not to the entity that's urging us to keep the building.
Right.
So, and the hundred thousand has lots of other competing uses as well. And so we can't make that decision tonight. But what I'm saying is, it's, it, it wasn't whimsical. If you entered a, a, a contract with one of the local Realtors, including one of the ones that is working to get one of the current tenants at the adjacent building a new space, I, I'm confident, the one, just, just the, the images that I saw in the square footages and the rent, which by the way, the lowest rent in town is six dollars a square foot that I could see. Most of them are ten or twelve. Now, that's beyond, that doesn't compare at all with zero. But six dollars a square foot somewhere in the downtown area is pretty competitive wherever you are in northern Illinois. Ten dollars a square foot downtown is more likely the average. So there'd be rent involved. And that rent should cover, depending on the landlord and the owner, what the obligations are for the tenant. So we can't refine that tonight, but I think we'd be willing to help with that cost. At least, I could recommend that, support that.
So what, what does that look like though, if we go down this path? I mean, here we have a resolution before us right now.
Um, I thi- I think you make a decision on the merits tonight. We requested in front of everybody, the public, publicly advertised, the, the tenants were all notified seven months ago that we were going to go through this process. We went through the process. It's legitimate. It's legal. And we got three proposals. We could have gotten a different proposal from any one of those three, but we got what we got. And so for the integrity of that process and to be legal about it, we have to consider those three proposals. And of the three, I've made a recommendation for your consideration tonight. And that's what's on the floor.
Okay. So Council, the, the question before us is, yeah, so the question before us is, we could go ahead and award the contract to Pappas Development for the hundred thousand dollars. And then we can work on what do we want to do, if we want to do anything more in potentially assisting FSA in finding a new space and whatever that might look like. That could be a separate conversation. And I'm in no way, shape, or form guaranteeing, saying we will, or anything like that. But it could be a further conversation if that's what makes us comfortable enough to take a vote tonight. Yes, Alderman Larson?
Am I correct in understanding we don't have to accept any of these tonight?
That's the council's choice. You can hold it over if you want. You can make a decision tonight. But action on the, on the proposals of some kind ultimately has to be done. You know, like you said, you can throw them out. You can choose one. But we have to follow this through. We said in the request for proposals that the council would hear it tonight and that there, this would be an action agenda. I didn't predict what the action would be.
Yes.
I want to say this publicly. The process that we use for obtaining the lowest bidder, oftentimes people come in with a flashy offer, an offer that's funny. And the problem that we have, just like when we had a problem with the garbage companies, is that if you come in with too high of an offer, when we're going for the lowest bidder, you're not gonna be chosen. If you come in with too low of an offer, when we're going for the highest bidder, you're not gonna be chosen. So the next time that someone wants to come before us with an offer, please make reasonable offers. Please don't make, it's a dollar or nothing, because that sort of thing doesn't make, the, the idea was for the highest bidder. And a dollar just simply isn't equitable compared to the other bid.
Alderman Verbert.
I support the Pappas Development proposal, but what I'd like to do is take ten thousand dollars from those proceeds to help fund the help that FSA needs to find a building. Certainly, I'm driving around doing the same kind of research with the vacancies in DeKalb. I wish we didn't have the number of, numbers of vacancies we have in DeKalb. But what can we do to help? And I think that this, according to the city manager, could go a long way to helping you find that place that can be more of a long-term home for you.
And I think Bill mentioned it too. This, this has been going on for seven months that we've talked about it. We've debated about it, tried to figure out what we should do. And that finally got us to the point of we need to do an RFP to find out what options are out there. So it has been an ongoing discussion, an ongoing thing here at council. Yes, Alderman Perkins.
I, I'm in no rush to do, to do anything, really. What, what I'd like to do is, again, it has been seven months. FSA has known about this for seven months. And then to come up in the eleventh hour and say, whoa, hold, hold on a second. What are we doing? But I think now that you are at the table, I'd like to flush out what their options are and take our, take a little more time doing that.
The only thing I might say on that is, we, we don't run the agency. We don't, we're not members of the board. That discussion could go in a lot of different directions at this point. I don't think it's gonna go toward the purchase. As, as Tanisha said, it's not gonna go toward the construction of a new building. Those costs right now are a lot more than you would incur if you were to rent a building for a reasonable period of time. And the, the services are in flux too, I think by Tanisha's own admission. So Youth Services Bureau has changed a lot in the last couple of years. It's being repurposed, reconsidered. We don't know how much space might be needed for that. Also don't know how much space really is the optimal space for, you know, the Senior Center or for any of the other services that were proposed in, in their proposal. So we can't think for them on that. And I don't know what we gain by, because we won't be part of that process. People are gonna come back and say, well, we've decided that we can't, this is really our best option. You know, then what do we do? Now you're back. And, and I think we have to consider realistically, and I don't think Tanisha would argue with, with me about this, who, who, what happens when the boiler goes out and they haven't saved enough money or borrowed the money yet? Who are they gonna go to? And, and what are we gonna hear from people who are being served there? Why that darn city sold us a crappy building? What the heck is happening here? Why don't we go back to the city and get the money to pay for that boiler? Or to fix that roof? So I, I think it's unrealistic to think you're out of this, one way or another, as long as that building stands. That building is sick. Unfortunately. And the mayor said that.
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, I know you're not in a hurry to do anything. And I guess there is no, I mean, there is no sense of urgency, except we're forty years in, we're seven months in. At, at some point, we have to make a decision. If we decide to wait till the next council meeting, I don't know how much ultimately is gonna change. I, I really like the idea of figuring out how we can lean in to help and assist with finding the proper space, finding the right location. But ultimately, I do believe that location, I would rather see us accept the Pappas approve, or proposal, and then we work with Family Service Agency on how we can help them. So that's kind of where I'm at. I don't know where you guys are at. Yes, Alderman, favor.
So I could see coming back at the second meeting in February and have, between now and then, looking for, looking at properties available in DeKalb which have opportunity to, to replace the building.
I, I don't think that's funny. Yeah.
Oh, which I was gonna say, you know, this, this opportunity for the development on that corner goes in line with the last eight years, seven and a half years that I've been on city council. In terms of bringing development to downtown DeKalb, bringing business to downtown DeKalb, bringing in an office building, putting people in downtown DeKalb, so that businesses in downtown DeKalb can actually do better, so that we have tax revenue increases. This is gonna help support and generate revenue for future generations, not just a single person. So, and it is, you know, again, someone who's putting their money and making the investment in our community. So certainly thank him for that.
So what do you, what were you actually suggesting?
I was suggesting a comeback at the second meeting in February with, just give, give an opportunity to either, to talk to real estate agents, I don't know if we can assign that, to someone in the city staff, but just to see what properties are available in the community that might, might have an opportunity for-
But are you suggesting to reject all proposals this meeting?
No, no, not reject any proposals at all.
Well, postponement decision on these?
Postponement decision until the second meeting in February.
Alderman Larson?
I agree with the timeline, but I also am gonna lean, lean into what Bill was saying, is that we're not Family Service Agency. We don't need to do this. That gives them till the second meeting in February to start looking at different properties. I'm going back to Bill saying, if we could come up with ten thousand dollars to help cover the cost of that search for you. And then I would further lean in that if we accept Pappas' which you, like, oh, we should call it Pappasville. But if I had my way, we would take Pappas' a hundred thousand dollars, and you would have that to go forward. So we need people who are invested in our community like Pappas. So that would be mine. Wait, second meeting in February, come up with ten thousand dollars of help to find properties that would be suitable. And then if we vote for the Pappas property in February, move forward to try to get more of that hundred thousand your way. And then to all the citizens of DeKalb, it, either way, it balances. That's mine.
So since your name was brought into light here, I didn't think in a positive way. John, did you grow up here?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Madam-
So, Council, I've been in town fifty-three years. This town has been great to me, great to my family. I grew up here, raised my kids here. They went through the Kalb High School.
So your kids went through the public school system here?
Absolutely.
Do you still live here?
Absolutely.
In the city?
With me?
Yeah.
Fifty-three years.
Yeah, in the city of Kalb.
I love it. And I'm gonna die here more likely than I want to take me over Fairview. But-
Here, watch out for that stop sign. Yeah, right. I hear it's a, it's a tough one. All those octagons.
It's the best street. I drive by it a couple of times a day. I understand it's, it's a very difficult situation with these nonprofit groups. But it's time for the nonprofit groups to reach out to the private sector and see what's out there. I know a lot of people laugh at that, but you'd be surprised, in the end of the day, it's the private sector that provides funding for these private groups.
For the nonprofit groups.
I, I apologize, for the nonprofit groups. I mean, when they raise money, where do they go to raise money? They go to the private sector. So I would love for Family Services to give me a call in the morning, or whenever they have time. And I can provide service to them very economically. And they would be surprised how much money I can save them and the other nonprofit services that I work with. And I donate my time and services. So definitely, we're here for a profit, but there's also soft side of our side, you know, of our heart here. So there's so much space in this community. And you'd be surprised that sometimes paying rent, it can be more economical than owning a piece of property, especially when you're nonprofit. There's offices on Sixth Street, they sold for like ten cents on a dollar. This nonprofit group's got owned. This is a commercial redevelopment project. The building is a dump, literally a dump. I cannot imagine anybody throwing more good money after bad money. I, I cannot imagine. Me personally, if I was forced to, if I get the award tonight, if I end up owning this property, there's no possible way. I'd rather have it empty than try to, to support it and try to maintain that building. It's, it's a total disaster. Whoever, whoever buys, total disaster to try to save that building. Whoever, whoever buys, total disaster to try to save that building. The building at 217, it makes a little bit more sense, but 217, it's probably a couple of hundred, $250,000. The corner building, I wouldn't sell it to my worst enemy. Literally. Not to mention $15,000, $20,000 worth of AEP issues that the building has. So, that's all I got to say.
And the last thing, when I was asking you just to make sure people understand that you live here, raised your kids here, you're a businessman here, but also...
Absolutely, it's a beautiful community.
The properties that you renovated, the amount of additional property tax revenue...
$1.2 million annually, and then I stopped counting.
Right.
Downtown within, within four blocks radius. You know what? This is a free market. People from out of towns can invest.
Yep.
Local, other developers that can invest, they chose not to.
Anyone in this audience could invest and send it to the RFP.
Absolutely, you know, we're Americans, you know, we don't live in China or Russia, you know?
Well, that's why I, I...
People have the opportunity, and I appreciate it.
I publicly just wanted to say, I appreciate you staying in our community.
Thank you.
I appreciate you investing in our community, because you're someone of choice, you could go anywhere and invest your money, but you've invested it here in the city of DeKalb, so thank you for that.
I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor.
You betcha. All right, so while I'm hearing, I think, an overwhelming amount of, we're going to postpone, Bill, to the second, why the second meeting in February?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I jumped on his bandwagon.
Yeah.
If the month of work, it is fine.
Yeah.
So, what, what's the likely, what are we likely to hear in 30 days? Are we likely to hear that there is a space, or that there isn't a space? And are we likely to hear what the cost is, or not? What you're banking on is that you're likely to hear that there is a space, and I think there probably is a space, just what I saw in passing for another purpose altogether. And that something might be worked out, but something's...
Hey gentlemen, if you could, it's hard to hear. Thank you.
Something still has to be invested in the form of rent to acquire that space, to secure that space, not to acquire it. So that gets us back to how the agency involved is going to secure that space, and we can't speak for them. So, no matter what you do, you can't deliver the picture. So we could wait, we could put six months on it, a year, it doesn't matter. You don't control the decision that's going to be made to either take that space or not. You can't order it, you know what I mean? So I think you have to do what's within your purview, and, and you're, and you can decide, as you will, about the three proposals. If you throw them all out, then we start again, I presume, or you can direct me how to, how to proceed.
I don't think we're saying throw them out, but there is a, if you want a delay.
But I, I just, in the interest of the people who've come out tonight, I think there either has to be a difference in 30 days, or we're just, what are we doing? What are we doing?
Yeah. And what happens if, when that boiler goes out, because that part we just put in dies? Now what do we do?
And, and would we, would we sell it with a guarantee that they will never, ever be able to ask us for help? What difference would that make? That promise could never be kept.
Right.
We've already seen that promise from years ago, just ignored by people who've approached us looking for money. So, yeah. I think we vote on the proposal this evening, we cash the $20,000, and then when we come back in two meetings, we'll have money in the bank, and we'll be ready to go. Maybe we'll have an idea of where we stand at that point. I think it's important that we move forward on it.
Because if we vote right now, and his, your recommendation, Alderman McAdams, is to vote for the approval of Pappas' proposal. And if we vote that down, does that mean rejection, or what is that?
Yeah, yeah, you, so you can do a couple of things.
Yeah.
You can continue this conversation. Let's say you went with the city manager's proposal. There is no contract before you tonight, so I'd have to bring something back in two weeks at the next meeting. And that would be in the form of a resolution approving a contract to sell, and an agreement, at least, in this case, it'd be a sale. So at that time, if, if you vote it, then there is going to be money coming. Right now, there's no money coming, as a result of just saying, Bill, we like this or we don't like it. But then there would be money coming to you, and it could be negotiated, we can get to a closing, obviously, that's what we have to do. So that'd be another 30 days after that. We have, we will have time here to help the Family Service Agency, or anybody else involved here, to secure another place. And we can, with the, with the, I think the goodwill that we have with the local real estate community, we can probably find some help to, to secure a number of options for the board of Family Service to consider in that period of time. So you're talking basically four or five weeks here before the closing. In fact, the closing, according to the RFP, was to be done within 45 days. So we acknowledge that we'd have to come back to the council, and then there, you know, like, like any other process, attorneys would be involved looking at the purchase-sale agreement, and back and forth, and then, and then get to a closing, so that's about four or five weeks.
Yes, Alderman Verbeck.
Yeah, I'm still ready to move forward. We otherwise don't have the funds to help these folks out.
Right.
So, we, we put it off another month, there's still no money to help them.
Right.
We're right back in the same place, so that, that's where I'm at.
So then what I'm hearing is, we have a motion, essentially, or a suggestion from Alderman McAdams and Alderman Verbeck, to go ahead and call roll and approve, that's what's before us, approve the city manager's recommendation, but then I think we all believe that we want to figure out everything we can do, whatever we might be able to do to help FSA find that spot, even though I would have loved to have been doing this seven months ago, when it first came up, had everyone out, got everyone's feedback, they could have called us, talked to us.
Three years ago, or 10 years ago, 15 years ago.
Right, but we are at the 11th hour now, and, yeah, yeah, exactly. So that's, that's what's going to come before us, and if we reject that, that doesn't mean we reject the proposals, then we could call a different vote.
Well, you basically table the discussion until the next meeting.
Yeah, but if we call the vote, we can table the discussion. Yes.
With all due respect, you know, we've been minding the property, been spending money on this, this is all I do for a living, I take risks.
Yeah, I bet.
So you guys put this out for a bit, you got the offers, make a choice tonight.
Yeah.
What are we going to do? I mean, you know, this is not a wedding rehearsal, you know? It's a business decision. I mean, it's, that's what it boils down to. I mean, I, I'm very sympathetic, but, you know, we don't do this for, for training purposes.
So I'm, I'm going to go ahead and call roll, based off of we accept the city manager's position or recommendation, and I think we all will agree that we'll work with FSA and figure out if there's something that we can do to help find a space, or incentivize a space, or something. I don't know what that looks like, and I don't know if we can, but I think we all, and I know all of you pretty damn well, that we want to make sure that we do what we can for our residents. Yes, Alderman Verbeck.
Mayor, do, do we need a motion then? I want to be sure that those funds are included from the sale of the proceeds to help FSA. So do we need to show that in this motion?
That could come later, once we have the funds.
It's clear.
Yeah.
That you want to spend something to help with that process.
All right. All right, so hearing any others?
Something could be just spending five bucks.
Yep.
So, I, I think, I think, Mayor, may I just say one thing?
Yes.
It is, it's hard to ignore 40 years of, of goodwill, and what that has amounted to.
I agree.
So to, to say to you that you're only good for five bucks is a gross insult.
Yeah, after 40 years of, of contribution, and I don't know what it just cost us to fix the boiler when there was no heat in it, just the other day, like you said, but we've continued to lean in on this property and our seniors. All right.
And I hate low-ball offers, so I wouldn't vote for a $5 offer if you paid me, so...
So with that, roll call, Ruth.
Perkins?
No.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Five I, to name.
All right, so the sale did go to Pappas Development, and then we'll talk at another meeting, either the next meeting, or however, Bill, on how we want to figure out how to use some of these funds to assist the senior center and FSA. All right, appreciate everyone coming out tonight. You don't have to stay for the whole thing, so feel free to go on your way, or you can stay for the rest of the meeting. I'm going to give it a minute to clear out.
Yeah, five.
Yeah, five, okay. And restroom break, anyone?
I thought it was a great discussion.
I do agree.
Thank you. It seems to be, it seems to be better.
Well, that's not fair.
I'm sorry you all had to show up.
I'm sure, I'm sure, you bet.
All right, moving on to agenda item K, Resolutions. Number one, Resolution 2023-001, approving a consulting contract with Sam Schwartz Consulting LLC for comprehensive public transportation study, which, by the way, so before I ask for a motion, we do have some public comment on this. I will start with Andrew Tillitson, Tilliton, Tillitson? Sorry, Andrew, I can't read it.
No, it's okay.
Yeah.
For what it's worth, it's Andrew Tillitson.
Thank you.
For the first O is an I, and you're all good to go. Okay. So I am, again, my name is Andrew, I'm here on behalf of Sunrise DeKalb. It's a youth environmental group here in town, and I wanted to express my support for the research that you are, all are doing in regards to public transportation. As someone that is concerned about the environment, more public transportation ultimately leads to less emissions and getting people to Chicago. And on top of that, I know that we have a community and a university here, and there are a great deal of people from the suburbs that would be incentivized to attend NIU if there were greater transport. I know as it stands, there's like a shuttle bus that happens once every blue moon, and honestly, the people, not many people know about it. I am a huge advocate for bringing a metro station out to DeKalb itself, if at all possible, but any greater service to get to Elburn and to ultimately facilitate that travel is a win for the environment and something I encourage greatly to, and it's not just me here that's saying this, I speak on behalf of the group, right? I'm speaking on behalf of Sunrise DeKalb, and I know there are a great deal of people from Emily to Kay, to a long list of names that don't mean anything to you necessarily, but there is a long list of people that are in the same boat as I am, with the exact same spirit and opinions, and I'd like to kind of channel their energy around me. On top of that, there's about two rows in the back here of people that would agree with me, and I believe some of them will be coming forward later. What I also would like to say is regarding the previous agenda item, I know that there was a lot of spitballing here about, you know, what could be done for a new senior center, and this is, this is a city, we, you provide public services to people, and I would greatly like to see on the next agenda some concrete action you can do to actually facilitate the creation of some new senior center. I, as a citizen of DeKalb for a decade plus, am disturbed by the non-answer, and I'd really like to see that get a great deal more concrete, and I have the funniest feeling that the people that were here tonight will be back if you do not. So there's elections coming, and you should do so at your own peril. Thanks, that's all.
No peril needed, we'll definitely be executing on that.
Right.
All right, so moving on to, I've got Parker Adalborn? Again, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm trying to read the writing. Yeah. What was the last name?
It's Alstoborn.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And just a reminder, I forgot to do that with Andrew, you do have three minutes for public comment.
Okay, sounds good. My name is Parker Alstoborn, but I am reading on behalf of Emily from our Sunrise DeKalb group. So this is what she has to say. While I couldn't be here for the meeting, I have several things to say as an environmental studies major, and as a member of the group, who updated DeKalb's sustainability plan. These points might have been, might have already been gotten to, but I feel it's important to emphasize them. Firstly, the metro is a key part of the sustainability plan with crucial environmental benefits. It would allow travel without cars, meaning less pollution and less paved natural areas. Secondly, the train would have many economic benefits. The cost of paving and repaving roads due to the constant weight of vehicles and providing parking is the reason many towns in America are going bankrupt, and the amount of car commuters into DeKalb could be greatly curbed by the train. The city would save money, and the commuters would save money on gas, as well as benefiting from the train being a safer mode of transportation. The train would allow for travel into Chicago for jobs and internship opportunities when people would otherwise be forced to drive. There are many people in DeKalb who either can drive but don't like to, who can't afford to, or have conditions that impact their ability to drive, meaning the train would be a very important accommodations tool. DeKalb is also, is also one of the only two cities hosting an Illinois public university that doesn't have a direct train line to Chicago. As a city that did have, once have passenger rail to Chicago, and being so close to other towns that still have it, many feel that it's doable and necessary to bring the train back to DeKalb. There is a broad community support for a train line, which promises high ridership. In conclusion, build it, and they will come. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right, and it looks like we have one more. It is Samuel Lupien? I'm struggling, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right.
All right.
Hello, I'm quite bad at this, I'll say that upfront. I have been here all 23 years of my life, went to school with your son, he's a grade below me, was in band with your son, he was a senior when I was a freshman, and I even worked in the dry cleaner that Mr. Nicholas went to. I've always wanted a metro personally, and, you know, talking to my friends and everyone I went to high school with, it was always of interest, you know, swimming in the back of our minds, but practically, I talked to people at NIU who drive from effectively Chicago proper every single morning to NIU, and return to Chicago proper, and repeat that five days a week, at the very least. NIU itself isn't in the greatest spot. I think we all can recognize the declining student numbers, student membership. It might be something, it might be nothing, but having the access like the metro to this city, it could be a way to curb that, and that's my only thought.
Thank you. All right, can I have a motion to bring, and I'll read it again, Resolution 2023-001, approving a consulting contract with Sam Schwartz Consulting LLC for comprehensive public transportation study in the amount of $98,373 to the floor.
So moved.
Wow. All right, I'm going to go with move by Alderman Morris, and seconded by Alderman Perkins. All right, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm, I'm pleased to bring forward the result of another RFP, and it is a contract before you tonight, as the title said, to engage in a comprehensive public transportation study focusing on commuter rail, and bringing that to the city of DeKalb as, as the speakers have spoken to. It is something that has been in the public discourse for, I could say, generations, and not be probably afraid of being... and not be probably afraid of being disputed. It's, it's at least been in the public discussion since 72, I think, when the last passenger train let off. It was later to be part of Amtrak, but at that time, there was no Amtrak. Let off, picked up some people at the DeKalb station. And I, if people took the time to look at the background for this particular item, they would have seen the full transportation proposal from this one company that we're recommending tonight, Sam Schwartz. And guess what's on that cover? They took the time to find the picture of that last stop. So, for a long time, 50-plus years now, we haven't had that opportunity. And until only recently, we've always been discouraged even trying to investigate this because, quick consultation with our, our state and, and federal political partners has usually resulted in the discouraging commentary that, well, there really isn't enough money anywhere in your area, or even in our levels, to help you when our commitment is to major metropolitan centers and so forth. But it has been happening. And it has been happening, as one of the speakers just said. Actually, Northern is the only university community in Illinois, a state university in Illinois that doesn't have rail of some type. Amtrak does stop at that other place that I won't mention. And so, so what can be done about this? In consultation with our partners at NIU, and the NIU administration has been very supportive of this, and, and along with us, we had the, the, the epiphany back about nine, 12 months ago, that the federal government has provided an enormous amount of money in transportation and public transit channels. And a lot of that is still available. We continue to see on a monthly basis calls for proposals. And they generally have to be, if they're not shovel-ready, they at least have to be thought through. There has to be community engagement and community involvement and, and community commitment. And we don't have that. So how do we get in the game? Well, the first thing you have to do, as we've found by talking to our, our friends at Metro and talking with other public transportation authorities in our state and elsewhere, is we have to do this study this before you tonight. We solicited interest back in, in mid to late October, received the proposals in December, have been talking with our partner, and NIU is a partner in this in the sense that we're both in it for the long haul. We're in a position right now. We had, we have some money set aside. It's $100,000 in your 2023 budget under, in case you're wondering. In the transportation fund budget, and it is line item 200-30-37-63900, other professional services.
Thanks for that background.
Yes. I heard there's some wonder about that, so. Anyway, this is exciting. I, I think even just to be at this point, and to have interest from two people who did respond to our RFP, we actually had about a dozen people, individuals, some of them were principals in, in consulting firms, some of them were public officials, appointed officials, who were just interested in what are you doing out there? And the word is out. We're not only becoming a, an interest for worldwide private corporations, NIU is at a point where we are with their own star shining in, in, in many areas, but in, in particular in research and, and in related fields, a place where businesses would want to come. But fundamentally, and it was referred to, I think, by Andrew earlier, maybe our biggest asset are the students and staff and faculty who commute daily to and from the city of DeKalb to either study or to work at, at NIU. That presents a critical mass. So if you're looking at this coldly and businesslike from the standpoint of the people who are issuing federal dollars for such things, that is a key consideration. So, the sum of all this is, we have before you tonight, one of the proposals is from Sam Schwartz, not the individual, but that's the name of the company, Sam Schwartz LLC. They and, and also the, the, the other interested party that submitted a proposal have a lot of depth and breadth. You saw in the background, it's in the public background on, on the website today, their, their experience. We have talked to the principals, they're excited about working with us. First, we need to get approval of this particular contract, and then we can get to work. And this process will be, this first process, this first step will be about a 90-day, that would be aggressive, maybe 90 to 120 days at most. And then there'll be results that'll be brought forward to you and to our community to hear. And this is going to be the nitty-gritty, the down and dirty, is look at potential ridership, of course, but also to look at how people are currently transporting themselves and others to and from this area, the impacts of that in terms of dollars and, and investments, but also in terms of environmental impact. So all of that together will be part of this study. And we're looking forward to it, and we recommend your approval.
City council? Alderman, favor.
Where to begin? So I'm, I'm in support of this, obviously. And it, it's a little sad for me if my dad could have lived to see the day when we were actually talking about bringing rail service to DeKalb, because I, I kept telling him it's never gonna happen in your lifetime and probably not in my lifetime. But I do give kudos to yourself and to city staff and to the mayor for making the connections to, to talk about the needs of DeKalb and getting that. I actually have a, a question for our transit director. Because one of the, one of the questions that came up, and it's kind of a sidebar, but it's, I think we first started, I asked about Google Maps and transit on Google Maps. And as Andrew pointed out, you, I don't, have we, have we, are we there? Are we updated? Do we need to do better? Because, and I did hear on the radio today about the increase in the trips to Elburn. And that, that'll actually be an interesting one, because if we switch over to electric buses, what's the, is, is the impact to the environment gonna be less or more by using electric buses, trains? I think the time-wise, it's gonna be about the same. I don't think the train's gonna go too much faster than a bus necessarily. It depends.
You won't have a, you, the train will have a direct, you know, line all the way through versus having...
Well, it's gonna go to Elburn, but yeah, there might be switching, we don't know. But is there a way? I guess my, so my question for you is, how can we get the word out about DeKalb's transit? Because we have a great transit system in DeKalb. And I do, it's been a little while, but I've gotten emails about, I don't, you know, the bus schedule doesn't seem to be up to date. This is, but if it's out there as it, we feel it's, it's up and running and we're...
Well, I mean, the one thing that I would say, first of all, is that we would not be able to do this expansion of the service if we had not come back to the city council back in, I think it was October, September, to increase the amount that we are going to be paying the drivers. And because of that, we actually can do that now. You know, they were even showing me last night, the, the TransDev was showing me how, you know, their level of their applicants have increased from where they're at, say, back in September, from a staffing standpoint to now, they actually are able to pick up this extra work. So that's, that's, you know, a testament to what that change has done. And we can start doing these things. In terms of the up-to-date on Google Maps, Brian Van Heen, who's our assistant transit director, started back in May, actually spent about two, two months, better part of that going through and just geo-coding everything. And there's a lot more that we need to do. But in terms of what is on Google Maps, that is something that we're actually going through and have updated and now are tweaking. Before this, it was, I don't wanna say it was not being done, it just was on, you know, it was lower on the, the...
Priorities.
Totem pole, I guess, if you would, if you would say, you know. But that's something that Brian's done, so we're very confident that we're in a much better place at that. And it's, it's a living thing. You can't just say, okay, we're done and walk away from it. But yes.
Okay, good. No, I'm excited. I'm excited to, to get the results of the study. Thank you.
Very good. I think the last time I did this, I walked away and it kept walking me out.
You can hang out for a bit if you want, you know?
Sounds good.
Whatever you want, man. Other council members? Alderman, Adams?
I grew up in Midlothian, Illinois, which is 25 miles south of Chicago. And there was Metro Rail from the beginning of my life, and I took it all the time. And when I have been home for any reason, you can get on Metro in Midlothian, and for $5, you can get dropped off right at the White Sox ballpark. So it's been a part of my life. I took the Metro when I lived in the western suburbs, took the Metro every day from the western suburbs to Chicago and back. And I think it's an integral thing that we can do here. I can't wait to do it. I can't wait to vote yes. And I know that everybody that I've talked to in the ward has been absolutely in favor of it. So I just can't wait. Thank you.
Go Sox. Alderman Smith?
Mike, there is an app, though, for the maps, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
For the bus, yeah, that is up-to-date constantly, so I just...
Yeah, the, the one thing I will say is that, you know, what we're using, something called ETA Spot, there, it's, it's an older technology. So that is something that is part of our, back, and I think it was back in May, June, when I was in front of the council here, we applied for funding through the Rebuild Illinois program to get more up-to-date software. So we're waiting here back on that award. I think IDOT should be announcing something here in the next couple of months. But yes, the, and the ETA Spot does work, and it is updated, and TransDev does keep to, keep, you know, working to keep, make sure that it's updated. But there's better technology, better tools that are out there.
And one more thing, Mayor, I thought Deputy Chief Leverton would be here supporting this, but it's, it's a side joke, if you don't know, he's very big into trains, so maybe he is hiding back there. But anyway, I'm for this 100%. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman, favor.
Yeah, I'm also for it. I was a rider of the train up until kindergarten in DeKalb, so it would be wonderful to see it back. We see our initial outlay here for this study. What do you see, city manager, from our other partners at the county and the university? Again, this is a regional commitment, a regional investment.
Sure is.
How will they be participating financially as we go into the future with this type of...
Well, great question. This, the, the study will get us to first base. We will have some rough idea of whether we're even gonna be able to check the boxes that make us a credible entity for, the people ultimately are gonna make the decision, RTA and Metro. And we would be the first on the west of the color counties to get that. And we are rapidly becoming, economically speaking, a, a very viable, we are now, a very viable competitor. But we have to prove that we have the ridership. Because after all, there isn't a transit system in the country, in the world possibly, but not in this country that isn't heavily subsidized by federal dollars that come through state offices as well. And this would be. So the question is, then, for the powers that ultimately make the decision, is by how much? It's one thing to build it, and it's the other thing to operate it. And what are the tolerances that they have? I don't know what those are right now. We're certainly gonna find out where we are. They wanna see that, what the potential ridership is going to be. And that's why we're, we're expanding our, to the extent that we can afford it right now, we're just doing this out of pocket, the number of times, from two to five times a day in the morning. Going to 10, well, that's a surprise. You heard it tonight. That's great. Five in the morning, going five in the evening.
That's correct, yeah. We were going from two to two and five, five.
And that will help, and if nobody's riding the buses to get to Elburn, eh, that's not a good thing. You wanna see that, you know, we, we got people really jumping on there, and they really enjoy the fact that they have options now. They have to go at whatever the, the time is, 7 o'clock in the morning, and leave at 6:00 exactly at night. So we're gonna do all those things. And as I said, then compare what the overall, looking over the next 15, 20, and beyond years, what are the impacts on, or the savings in terms of impacts on roads and, and, and all those other public costs that figure into a public transportation system? So with all of that, that's what we're getting from this. It's not gonna be perfect, but it's gonna be based on what we know now, with some tiptoeing into the future with these new buses going to the train station. And then we'll know. So the answer to your question is, too early to tell. Are we gonna ask? You darn well better believe it. But we don't ask if there's no chance. We ask if we get some read from those who are ultimately gonna decide yea or nay, that yeah, you're on the right track, keep working it. It gets more expensive from here. When we get the go-ahead, and I'm thinking optimistically, and I, and I sure hope that's the outcome of all this, it, it may cost upwards to 80, $100 million to build it. If we've got that in our budget, I'd like you to show it to me. But obviously, we'll need other partners. And it's something that's figured out over time. And then the other half of it is just the operating. Because we can't just provide the money for the capital and say, okay, there you are, bring the trains. They're gonna say, well, it's gonna cost a little to do that. What are you gonna do to make that happen? That's what people watching this tonight are asking, what's it gonna cost me? And we don't know that answer yet. $100,000 to play the game, to get, to get to the table, we're gonna do it, if, if you approve.
And you all have a letter of support from the university president as well.
Yes.
But then, to also just give them some credit, the process that we've been going through, Northern was a great partner, introducing us to opportunities.
Very much so.
Zone experts that triggered some of this conversation as well. And then their contacts at the state level on transportation and making some of those connections has been really helpful to get us to the point of this. But I agree, we can't be the ones that are gonna stroke every check that needs to be stroked in order to get this to happen, when it is gonna be a major benefit to the city, a major benefit to the university, which by the way, is the only public university, large public university in the state of Illinois that does not have rail. So from an equity perspective, I mean, this is, this would be, as, as Andrew said, it'll be great for the university, I have no doubt about it. But we will be leaning in on that to stroke checks to help fund this going forward. But as Bill mentioned, we gotta, we gotta start. So we at least had some money available to be able to start the process. Then we'll see how it plays out from there. Someone had their hand up. Alderman, favor.
You had mentioned the, the funding, and so I was, that was one of the questions I received, was is this funding the $98,000? Are these federal funds that have been entrusted to us as managers of the transit system?
But it can be used for this, this is a consultating...
Correct, but these aren't necessarily direct taxpayer dollars from DeKalb. These are federal dollars that have been entrusted.
That is correct. That is correct. And if the federal government does do this, has done it for generations, again, so that smaller communities can plan, otherwise they wouldn't have had the means to do that to even get in the conversation. So we appreciate that support.
Thank you.
Just as we appreciate President Freeman's letter, because it's, it's as strong and as forceful as you might imagine for what we're trying to do at this point. And with her leadership, it's been a, a really collaborative and fun process to this point.
Hey, Mike? I'm just kidding. I'm really, really excited about this project, the thought of, and hopefully, Alderman, favor, it is in our lifetime that we get it. But it's great that we can actually start this particular process and be the founders of a story that I hope, you know, generations are gonna tell about what a great thing it is to live in the city of DeKalb, hop on a train and get downtown Chicago. Alright, so any other questions or comments, council? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
A.I.?
Resolution 2023-001 passes. For the next resolution, I have to recuse myself, because I'm a commercial property owner of downtown DeKalb, and it's part of the AIP program. So I will have Senior Alderman, favor, run this portion of the meeting.
Resolution 2023-002, authorizing an architectural improvement program, A... Resolution 2023-002 authorizing an architectural improvement program, AIP, economic incentive for Sullivan Staverman, 22 East Lincoln Highway. Can we get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Smith, second by McAdams, city manager.
Thank you. I also want to thank Earl Sullivan, one of the principals of the business, who is here tonight and has been waiting patiently for this moment. I told him, I think probably up front is a good place to put you, because you'll get in and out. I was wrong. So this family has been, the Sullivan family has been at the current location for 70 years, but has actually been in business in this area for a lot longer, since 1927, almost 100 years. But they moved to DeKalb and located where they are now in 1952, and they have had a very successful family business at that location on East Lincoln Highway all that time. Lifelong committed customers and making new customers all the time. But during the building, that we were talking earlier about buildings that need upgrades, they, they would like to upgrade some of the facilities, some electricals, their bathrooms, HVAC system. They haven't asked the city for money in those 70 years, they're asking for some assistance from our AIP program, which is designed for this purpose. But the TIF AIP doesn't, by, by an error, I think, in the mapping that was done in 2017 and 18, doesn't include that parcel. It's incredible, actually, because it kind of goes north and, and misses that, that part. And I know, probably all along, it was just an oversight, but I discovered that as I thought, oh, yeah, the AIP will cover that, and it'll be good. But the councils saw the, the need to, and this is after a couple of years of working successfully with our AIP program, the Architectural Improvement Program for the people in the audience, which is a, a grant program that's considered on a case-by-case basis for grants up to $25,000 for just these kinds of interior and exterior repairs in downtown businesses. The AIP program in this case is funded out of our Fund 400, our general capital fund, and it can extend anywhere in, in our community. When we did the budget back in, in the fall, we talked about the East Lincoln Highway corridor, east of 7th, and also the South 4th corridor. And it still is available for both those corridors, which have probably, frankly, been neglected in that, but obviously, it takes an owner to come forward and say, can you help? And that's what's before you tonight. The proposal meets all of our guidelines. We just took the TIF AIP guidelines and moved them to this more general capital purpose, and I, I feel very strongly that this is as worthy of as any proposals we've received on the AIP program to date, and recommend your approval.
All right. Roll call?
Verbeck?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2023-002 passes.
All right, moving on to agenda item K3, resolution 2023 dash, oh, wait, hang on. We have public comment first? Sasha Cohen. And a reminder, you have three minutes, sir.
Yep. The resolution before you is censuring City Clerk Sasha Cohen for abandonment of his official duties as city clerk, and it includes, at least in the background information provided within your expanded agenda, a number of falsehoods. The first one is that for the series of absences that occurred during this year, there was zero notification or explanation made thereof. June 27th, July 5th, August 8th, and others, but those three I have direct receipts of with me now. Emails were provided to the recording secretary, Ms. Ruth Scott, providing public comment regarding the, the meeting, from myself noting that I would not be in attendance, noting that I was not in fact abandoning my duties, noting that I asserted the role of city clerk. That was written in each of the three emails provided. Furthermore, I have asserted the role of clerk and attempted to perform my duties within the acceptance of petitions for candidates during the 2023 municipal elections, something that you all are aware of, as you have chosen to prevent me from DSL, and we are in active litigation regarding. There is no reasonable contention that I am not asserting or acting as the, the city clerk at this time. You know, perhaps two months ago, prior to my return, you, you may have had a more reasonable grounds for, for doing so, but at this point, the circumstances and facts have changed. Reality is that I believe this is a retaliatory action for the, for the pending litigation, and also may be an attempt to, to remove me from office prior to the hearing of an electoral board meeting on this coming Friday. Obviously, as a member of the electoral board, I won't speak on the objections or anything that's been raised there, and so we've had a chance to hear from both parties, but I question whether this is a move to try and prevent me from serving on that board. Yeah, that is pretty much all I have for you. I definitely consider myself the city clerk and continue to assert that role and responsibility. Thank you.
All right, can I have a motion to bring resolution 2023-003, censuring the city clerk Sasha Cohen for abandonment of his official duties as city clerk? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbeck, seconded by Alderman Larson.
I have a comment on this.
I do not. Do you?
Please review the sheet, please.
Oh, you're right. Go ahead. Sorry about that. Again, three minutes.
As a measure of protocol, it is customary to bring the measure to the floor before public comment, and then debate and comments from the city manager. So once again, you're changing the rules here.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, you're welcome. I like keeping track of things. Rules are rules, and that's kind of what I'm going to speak to here. This council does not have the authority to censure the city clerk. Censure? Does anybody look that up? Does anybody remember, this is a bill coming to Capitol Hill from way back when, a censure can only be done against a member of the body the individual censured is part of. For example, the Illinois Senate can censure a senator, because the senator is part of that body. The State House can censure a member of the State House. The city clerk is not part of the city council, so when you use the word "censure," you need to look up the definition. And perhaps you might want to even look at City Code. Wait a second, I looked at City Code. There is nothing in City Code that deals with censure. There is nothing whatsoever that defines the word "censure" in City Code. There is no procedure defined in DeKalb City Code as far as censure goes. If there is, please correct me. The city manager's backup material also discusses a lack of a statement of economic interest. You know, I looked up economic interest, and I filed a FOIA with the, DeKalb County, which has everybody states of economic interest. The deadline for filing the statement of economic interest, as most of you know, is May 1st, 2022. ILCS 424A says time for filing, except as provided in section 4A 1061, by May 1st of each year, a statement of economic interest must be filed. County records received via FOIA show that two members of this board did not comply with the May 1st filing. Those members are Mayor Cohen Barnes and Alderman Greg Perkins. There is no record of filing your statement of economic interest by the deadline of May 1st. Perhaps you filed it after. So this is the pot calling the kettle black.
Please stay on topic to the agenda item, which is Sasha Cohen.
Do not interrupt me, Mr. Barnes, this is
You need to stay on topic, Mr. Trump.
I am on topic.
No, you're not.
Because the statement of economic interest is included
Here we are.
In the backup material.
This is about Sasha Cohen, your time's ticking.
I hope you plan to censure both of these members as well, because as Mr. Nicholas writes in the backup material, the record of Mr. Cohen's abandonment of his duties public and deep, I distinctly recall that the city clerk showed up for a meeting earlier this year to perform his duties as city clerk but was not allowed to do so. The chairman of this board did not allow him to conduct roll. So if you show up to work and you're not allowed to do your job, then you hold part of the blame here, Mr. Barnes. I'm not defending everything the city clerk has done.
All right, that's three minutes, thank you.
But I'm also pointing out the fact
Sit down, sir.
That you, that you
Your public comment's over.
Are the cause of this.
Sit down. Awesome. So I would take a motion to bring resolution 2023-003, censuring the city clerk Sasha Cohen for abandonment of his official duties as city clerk.
You already have a motion on the floor.
And we did a second.
And a second.
Oh, okay, all right, so we're good. So city manager, what you got?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, the, the background, I will stand on the factual basis of the background, and I was very clear to point out that Mr. Cohen's absences included in 2021, seven absences for council meetings, of which four were without notice and unexplained. So no, no lack of, of precision in that respect. If that was all that had happened, and, and that led up, as you remember, in the middle of 2021, to an apology by the clerk and professions of wanting to do the right thing, and then he went off on a tear and was absent without notice for 23 of the 26 meetings through this past November 28th. I, I just think it's illogical, I, I may be wrong in this, but I think it's illogical for any employer, and in this case, it's the people of the city of DeKalb, to trust that this person has their best interests, to trust that this person is acting in a professional manner. Rather like the philandering husband who's gone for nine months and then shows up in the kitchen and says, honey, what's for breakfast? That's where we are. So the, the evidence is deep and strong that this person has not any interest in serving the public he was sworn, and that he swore to faithfully serve during his tenure. Hence the idea of the censure. So a censure is a statement of this body, that you don't approve of this, that you find this to be so extraordinary in its lack of respect for the people to be served, that this person should not be recognized as the one you trust to record the proceedings of these meetings. And so that's what it is, that's the beginning and the end of it. I urge your support for this unanimously.
Council? Alderman McAdams?
We've all remained as quiet as we could for as long as we could, and it's a relief to finally address this matter in public. My father was first elected in 1985, and he served the village of Midlothian until 2005. For most of his career, he was the city clerk. The first election I voted in, in 1988, I came home from college to, to vote absentee, and the ballot box was kept in my dad's office. I marched in holiday parades and attended countless political dinners in what was jokingly referred to as the chicken dinner circuit. My father was not always perfect, but he enjoyed public service, and he was honored to perform what he considered to be a serious obligation to his community. This city council debated the role of our city clerk in 2019, and I was brand new to council, and the vote was quite contentious. And if you recall, the debate centered around the question, does DeKalb still, still need a city clerk? And I voted yes, but if I had that vote back to do again today, I wouldn't vote the same way. My father called me after that vote, and he and I exchanged pleasantries very briefly, because he really wanted to talk to me about the city clerk's role. My father, in all his time in active service, had never heard of any city, village, or town that ever used their clerk as a watchdog or an agitator for policy. He said it was quite unusual that DeKalb viewed their clerk in that way, and he didn't see that as the role of the office at all. Take the minutes, make sure the people have the documents that they need, and answer all the questions they have, was all he thought the city clerk should be doing. He thought it was inappropriate for our clerk to be at odds with the mayor and council as a matter of policy. He's gone now, and I think about what he said every time I deal with our city clerk. Lynn Physikis told me, I won't be fulfilling any of your document requests unless they fit my conspiracies. I thought it was arguably the most unprofessional thing I'd ever heard anyone say at work, and I used to work in collection agencies. On December 12th of last year, I arrived early to file my petitions, and I found myself standing outside City Claw, City Hall, waiting to be let into the building with Sasha, and we talked. I tried to offer this young man some unsolicited advice. I told him to just start doing his job, and when people questioned his troublesome past, to apologize and say it was just a youthful indiscretion. He told me he had no intention of doing anything constructive, and he wasn't going to run again. He said he found more meaning in campaign work and intended to follow that path. So I asked him if he was still collecting his paycheck from the city. He said that he was. I told him that he had quite a racket going for himself, and he seemed both amused and proud of his crime. Like I said before, I used to work in debt collections. The Fair Debt Collection Practices Act of 1977 requires me to say that my next statement is an attempt to collect a debt, and any information we obtain will be used for that purpose. We want our money back. We've given you $16,000, and we want it all back, and we don't want to pay you another dime. Our taxpayers work too hard for their money to give it to a grifter.
Other comments? Yeah, Alderman Morrison?
This is really emotional, because I feel like what you have done is to spit in the eye of democracy. You have taken the taxpayers' trust, you have taken the city's trust, everyone who supported you, and you have walked all over it and spit on freedom that I value very highly. I'm very upset by this, because you committed that you would do better than this, you committed to us something. In your role, you have the opportunity to make elected office more accessible for people, and I believe what you have done is to make it less accessible, and that is what is so disgusting to me about it. That's all.
Other council, Alderman Verbeck?
Yeah, very unfortunate to even be having this discussion right now. And unfortunately, I will be supporting censuring our city clerk, but that's really not good enough for me. If you refer to Illinois Municipal Code 65 ILCS 53.1-10-50, it's clear that I believe this council at a future date should hold a hearing to discuss potential abandonment of office for our city clerk. So what that means is, based on the facts that I've, I'm seeing over our time with this elected clerk, is that the facts are clear that this clerk has chosen to abandon this office. So we, as a corporate authority in the state of Illinois, have the ability to declare that office vacant if we, as a corporate authority, determine that the facts presented and those witnesses that would like to speak to this case are allowed to in a hearing format where we're, we're able to determine, is this office abandoned, or is this office being served? That's all I have.
Other council members? Okay, Alderman Morrison?
I know at the beginning you had reached out and said that we didn't supply the support that you needed, and we didn't supply the training you needed. However, when you had something on the agenda with people that you cared about, your notes were meticulous. They were beyond reproach for the one agenda item. And so all of us that sit here and try to do something for our community and accept funds for that, like tonight, this whole thing with, with the Family Service Agency, it, it, it's tearing all of us apart. It's not an easy decision that we did, but we did it. That's our job. When we ran and we accepted When we ran, and we accepted, and we were sworn in, no matter how crappy this job gets, we have to do it. We don't just sit there and smirk and say, "Yeah, I'm, I'm off changing the world in Bosnia or wherever," and you, we're still in DeKalb. So, it's beyond frustrating, it's beyond aggravating, it's disgusting, and you did it to all of the town, the whole city of DeKalb. And it really sucks, sorry.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I think we could go on and on and on. Bill provided a lot of information here. Ultimately, for me, you know, despite what some may think out there, I, I treat this very seriously, just like all of you. I think all of us genuinely try and do the best that we possibly can. Are we perfect? No, absolutely not. Do we make mistakes? Hundred percent, but the heart is in the right place. Our city clerk notified me he was a self-proclaimed anarchist, and I, I really didn't quite understand how to take that. And now, when I see him in this role, I really believe that's ultimately what he's trying to do. He can make comments about, "I notified this person or that person," but I'm telling you firsthand, didn't notify us, didn't notify me. I remember one time he notified the Chronicle that he wasn't going to show up, not, not council. I remember a meeting when he walked out, closed session, we didn't have a clerk, that was right in the beginning. We've all heard multiple times about how I'm going to do better, I'm sorry, I messed up, and interjects himself again, and just to cause more chaos. The whole election process, which Carolyn, I think, appreciates as a vet, no posting of where petitions could be submitted, no date, no, no involvement whatsoever, just shows up the day of, and ultimately, what I believe was probably to cause some turmoil in the election process itself. That is a sacred, sacred institution in the United States. We can't have this anymore. We've slowly pulled duties away, and I get excuses about the training, like Alderman Larson mentioned, but he spelled his own name wrong in minutes. He recorded votes of council members that weren't even here, and then won't take any notes whatsoever and says, "See YouTube." Well, we don't control YouTube. What, that, that's our public record, that's the history of the city of DeKalb. We've gone back decades at times, looking to find out, what was the discussion actually about? How do we know at some point YouTube is going to say, "We don't want to have any more government-related information on our, on our, our channels"? We, we can't control that. What we can control is to have accurate minutes submitted. What we can control is city business needs to continue on and on and on in a professional way, and we absolutely have not got this over and over again. What we've gotten is someone that wants to cause disruption with the way the city of DeKalb dudes does business, and ultimately, that's why this council agenda is here. We can censure someone. It is just a proclamation, we don't agree and don't tolerate this kind of BS anymore in an elected official at all. So, yes, we can have that council agenda, we can have it here, we're going to pass it, and the censure is going to take place. So, I regret we're in this position, I, I can't believe we're in this position, because I can't absolutely comprehend how anyone could treat such a sacred obligation of being elected official the way our city clerk has. So, unless there's any other comments, I would definitely take roll on censorship.
Hearing no comments, roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight i.
Resolution 2023-003 censoring the city clerk Sasha Cohen for abandonment of his official duties as city clerk has passed. All right, moving on to Agenda Item Four, or K4, Resolution 2023-004 authorizing an FY 2023 funding agreement with the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation, DCDC, in the amount of $35,000 for economic development services beginning January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2023. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor? So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favor, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to, forgive me if I tend to be expediting the rest of these matters, I think people are waiting in the audience very patiently to this point, and I'm going to do that. The first is an annual grant, which has been making for a number of years, to DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation, as you read in the title. The amount set aside in our, in our budget, which we had discussed at a number of sittings last fall, is $35,000, I recommend your approval.
Comments or questions, counsel? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight i.
Resolution 2023-004 passes. Executive Director Bork, thanks for coming out tonight, in case we had any questions, really appreciate it, and you don't have to stick around, sir.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, we appreciate your support.
Moving on to Resolution 2023-005 authorizing an FY 2023 tourism agreement with the DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau in the amount of $35,000 for tourism activities beginning January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2023. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Favor, city manager.
Likewise, the community development budget, which is within the, the public city budget for 2023, includes $35,000 for tourism activities, supported and, and created by our DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau in the amount of $35,000, and recommend your approval.
Questions or comments, counsel? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight i.
Resolution 2023-005 passes. Executive Director Strohacker and staff appreciate you coming out tonight, and appreciate everything you do. Paul, again, highly agitated right now, so normally, I would take a little bit more time and elaborate on the services DCDC has given this community, and we've seen it in many ways, in the form of all the economic development that's been going on. The DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau and Opportunity Unbound have worked tirelessly, trying to bring more bodies from outside our community to the city of DeKalb, as well as to the larger county itself. So, thank you so much for coming out tonight, in case we had any questions, and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Uh, number six, Resolution 2023-006 authorizing an FY 2023 funding agreement with the DeKalb Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $35,000 for the purpose of facilitating community events beginning January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2023. Can I get a motion? So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and this is the third of, of three that are funded by the community development budget in our FY 23 budgets, and this particular grant of $35,000 reflects an ongoing, decades-old partnership between the city of DeKalb and the DeKalb Chamber of Commerce, recommend your approval.
Counsel, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight i.
Resolution 2023-006 passes. Not seeing chamber, no, okay. Moving on to Agenda Item Seven, Resolution 2023-007 authorizing a payment to the DeKalb County Community Foundation on behalf of the DeKalb Municipal Ban for Services beginning January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2023, in the amount of $41,088. Can I have a motion? So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Same price as last year, this is, who doesn't like to municipal ban? This is, I think, a wonderful investment, and recommend your approval.
Counsel, questions, comments? I'll slow down a little bit, just in case. All right. Obviously, by all the laughter, I have been moving pretty quickly, I apologize for that. Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight i.
Resolution 2023-007 passes as well. Man, my vet comment, I apologize for leaving a Navy veteran out of that comment. I'm replaying a bunch of stuff in my head as I'm doing this, too, so sorry about that. So, we have Marines, we have Army, and we have Navy. All right, moving on to Resolution 2023-008 authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the DeKalb Public Library for the administration of employee health insurance. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor? So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This, the title indicates this particular resolution will bring the, the library employees back on to a, a benefit that is provided through the city of DeKalb for their employees having, having to do with the, the health insurance. The library has, has attempted to find a comparable package in the private sector over the last year, and has not been able to do so. I've recommended a term of one year here, so we can feel it out, see how it works for both parties, and that's what's before you tonight.
Yes, Alderman Favor.
So, who doesn't like better service and less cost? I congratulate Director Faulkner for coming with the idea. We'd love to do more of this, if there's ways to, to share resources between, you know, items that we can do, I think, within our community to save taxpayer dollars, or spend the money better. Let's hope it works out well. Thank you.
Alderman Perkins.
I like Alderman Favor's thoughts, I think it's great for bringing this forward and sharing it, and I guess I'm, I'm a little curious if there are more opportunities like this that exist out there, because it's, you know, I think we've got, we look at things, you know, we've got an HR department there, we've got an HR department with the city, and I think there are some shared resources where there may be some opportunity. So, if there's more of that, I would love to understand more.
City manager.
To that end, Emily sitting in the front, hi, Emily. Maybe she and I can open a conversation about what that means, and bring back something to you within about 30 days or so, just as a, some talking points at that point, I mean, we're not going to have an agreement, but, but to talk about administrative functions that might, might be found at a cheaper cost and with less...
And maybe some, some shared things, you know? Because I think you look at things like, to me, in my, in my minds, I would, I'm thinking, the IT function, you know, I think the IT function requires some technical capability that not everyone has. You know, we look at some of the admin things you talked about, I think, some even, just spitballing a little bit, some of the maintenance-type stuff. We've got a lot of properties with a lot of different maintenance folks and a lot of different...
Hold your ears, Andy.
Not that I'm looking for job security for anyone else, you know, but, but I think, I think there's some opportunity here.
All right, we have a lot of expertise that definitely could lead to efficiencies, for sure.
We'll, we'll start at this point, and then we'll see how far we go.
Great.
Any other comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight i.
Resolution 2023-008 passes. Moving on to Nine, Resolution 2023-009 authorizing the purchase of a 2023 Freightliner LR8-56 aerial truck from Global Rental Company in an amount not to exceed $148,720. I hope it has cup holders. Can I have a motion, please? So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. City manager.
We'll have to look at, it wasn't on the list.
Not on the bucket, even, you know?
I don't know. I was going to say, by the way, in reference to the last item, I do have a small but meaningful library in American history, so I'd be happy to start talking about how we can work that out. Okay, this, this particular project, as, as so often is the case with Mr. Rye, started with the idea that we're, we're going to try to replace a, in this case, it's a boom truck that can no longer be certified in the, in the test lanes that it has to go through once a year, with maybe a, a really good, strong, used vehicle. And there happened to be a vehicle out there, and the company was not in a position to quickly move it, and Andy negotiated a lease arrangement to see if we liked it, and so we leased this thing for a period of months in 2022, and we liked it. So, and it was better than what we could find for, for, I guess, dollar for dollar, so we engaged in some negotiating, there was some credit we wanted against a new, there was a new truck that was proposed to us, and, and there was, and it was the one we were leasing, and what if we got some credit for the leasing? Obviously, that, that was reasonable, and then there was a trade of what we had, they, they knew we had a, I, I was going to think of another word, a dog, but we had that. And so, we were able to negotiate an out-of-pocket cost of about, just under $149,000 without a cup holder, so recommend your approval.
Comments or questions, counsel?
Just real quick, not a dog, a well-used, we've squeezed all the value out of that truck, and it's 26 years old, you know, that's, again, to the, to the staff and the maintenance team, again, trying to be good stewards of the community's dollars, that's, that's what we're trying to do here.
Any other comments? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight i.
Resolution 2023-009 passes. Have fun with it, Andy. All right, moving on to L, ordinances, second reading, we have none. So, that gets us to M, ordinances, first reading. Ordinance 2023-001 authorizing the distribution of American Rescue Plan Act 2021 funds to the preservation of the Egyptian Theater in the amount of $50,000 from Fund 110, 110-00-00-69700. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor? So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Larson. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I should note at the top, in case somebody complains, that these are not resolutions, which normally they would be, but they were not provided for in the budget, so we're bringing them to you as an ordinance, which requires a little more, I think, attention, and certainly the council gave its attention back at the last meeting in November to the, the next several ordinances, which have grants to local not-for-profits, and the first is to the Egyptian Theater, and the amount that the council consensus had recommended was $50,000, that's before you in this ordinance, and we recommend your approval.
Comments or questions, counsel? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
No.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven i.
Ordinance 2023-001 passes. All right, oh, can I have a, so we need a waived second reading, too, right?
Yeah, if you want to waive it.
Yes. I would take a motion to waive second reading on Ordinance 2023-001.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
No.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2023-001. Number two, ordinance 2023-002, authorizing the distribution of American Rescue Plan Act 2021 funds to stagecoach players in the amount of $25,000 from Fund 110, which is 110-00-00-69700. I have to read that, right? Okay. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Favor, I'm going to go seconded by Alderwoman Larson. City manager.
Likewise, that discussion on November 28th highlighted the council's interest, the consensus of the council's interest to allow for a $25,000 grant to go to stagecoach players. This ordinance would make that happen, and we recommend your approval.
Council, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
Ordinance 2023-002 passes. I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Motion to waive second reading and approve.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2023-002. Awesome. You can stick around if you want, but you're more than welcome to leave, too, but I mean, you've been in it at this point. You know? Why not stick around?
I'm not sure we have a better second.
The best show around, yeah.
You have to stay.
Yeah, thank you. All right, number three, ordinance 2023-003, authorizing the distribution of American Rescue Plan Act 2021 funds to the J.F. Glidden Homestead Historical Center in the amount of $25,000 from Fund 110, which is 110-00-00-69700. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second?
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City manager.
Ms. Barnes is on the National Register of Historic Sites. It has a roof that is in grievous need of replacement, and probably a good amount of the decking underneath, which originally was there, and then there were wood shakes and so forth, and lath underneath the shakes. This will be a roof that will have, I guess, a 30-year, 40-year, whatever it will be. Okay. The most we can find in the way of guarantee. So we had a discussion about this also on November 28th, and the council consensus was to support this. I brought it back to you with my recommendation.
Questions, comments, council? I just wanted to say it was the board meeting that triggered us getting more informed on what's going on at the historic center, and that was great.
Thank you.
And it was really cool that that action led to this action, which is awesome.
Absolutely.
All right, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
Ordinance 2023-003 passes on first reading.
Motion to waive second reading and approve.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
Ordinance, our second reading has been waived for ordinance 2023-003. Fantastic. All right, number four, ordinance 2023-004, authorizing the distribution of American Rescue Plan Act 2021 funds to the New Hope Missionary Baptist Church in the amount of $100,000 from Fund 110, which is 110-00-00-63700. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City manager.
The mayor referenced this earlier in another context, the Antiglade and North Task Force, and every listening session that we've been party to or been associated with for a number of years has identified the need for a community center in that neighborhood. This is within the Antiglade and North neighborhood. It is a project that is going to happen. There is a commitment by this church to make it happen, but very importantly, it's not to be just for the congregations, for adults and children within the Antiglade and North neighborhood and First Ward, and we are in a position tonight to support what the council thought was worthy back on November 28th, and I strongly support the council's inclination here. Recommend your approval.
Questions, comments? Yes, Alderwoman Morris.
I just want to say that I'm super excited about this project. From the very first time I set foot in that church, I remember seeing their vision for this, and it's thrilling to be able to be a part of it coming to fruition.
Yes, Alderman.
I'm sorry I missed that vote on November 28th, but I definitely want to give my support and say that it's a fantastic addition to the neighborhood. It's certainly well-needed, and we're happy to provide it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes. I'm really excited about this. No, I'm not kidding. So sorry, waiting my turn.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
All right, awesome. Ordinance 2023-004 passes on first reading. I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Any comments on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2023-004. Number five, ordinance 2023-005, amending various chapters of the municipal code as it pertains to boards, commissions, and committees, Open Meetings Act training, public participation, removal of a member, and term limits. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second?
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. If you go through this, this laundry list, you'll see that there are a couple of themes. One is that we require training for all of our appointed officials and in some other regards, obviously, the council in the Open Meetings Act, and we thought, and members of the various boards and commissions that serve the city also have felt that why aren't they required to do the same, and wouldn't it help if people could understand how to conduct meetings and decorum that we expect in meetings and so forth? So we thought, why not highlight those particular boards and commissions and just say, this is a requirement? I mean, it doesn't take very long, it's 45 minutes probably, it's done online, but it's a good exercise, and if you do it once a year like we're all required to do, it helps you understand why, how important it is to let people have their say, but also to do it in a dignified and fair manner. That's one piece of it. Another is, and we saw a lot of it here tonight, how about people that just don't show up, don't care, don't seem to care anymore, or just have disappeared? What happens there, to allow for the removal of a member, which isn't currently in the code, except for extraordinary circumstances, and then a time limit on some of the commissioners. We had, we had a time limit, which would mean about the time, particularly with the Fire and Police Commission, I have to say, just to pull them out. It takes a while, that's a very hard-working commission, when they're hiring, in a hiring period, creating the list for the Fire and Police Departments. It can mean a period of five or six days, eight-hour days, where they're interviewing people, they're discussing the interviews, and moving on and moving on and moving on, and they're seeing sometimes dozens of people. So all of a sudden, they get used to that, and then they're gone. So this would remove the, obviously, the appointment power is still where it's always been with the mayor, but for people that want to continue to serve as they're getting some experience there, this is something that requires familiarity with, not only with the law, but just with the processes, and to have that establish your ability to do this thoughtfully and professionally. So we added that, too, as something that made sense. So that's, in general, why this appears tonight. It's a cleanup thing as far as the staff are concerned, but we recommend this to you on both readings.
Counsel. Alderwoman Morris?
I'm only opposed to the chapter two, the very first item, replacing city clerk with recording secretary where applicable. I know we've already discussed this to some degree this evening, but I'm just going to vote no because of that.
Actually, so because the council tonight, with the censure action, did not remove, I mean, a city clerk is a constitutional office, as we know. The point tonight, the focus tonight, was on the person in the job and whether that person, and I think council member Morris spoke eloquently to the point that we expect, we expect seriousness from that person who's ever serving. So we're not, at this point, talking about changing the duties, and we can't remove that without referendum, so. And the duties, frankly, were spelled out first in 2019, and then by this council in November of last year, I don't see why we can't leave it as is.
We'd already done that in some, and then in others, the city clerk still remains. So I just saw this as...
It was just in that chapter, where, yeah, so I think that chapter has been honed and refined by a lot of discussion in this room, so I...
But understood, yeah.
I appreciate that clarification, thank you.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
Ordinance 2023-005 passes on first reading. I'd take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2023-005. Moving on to number six, ordinance 2023-006, amending Chapter 64, Smoking Regulations, Section 64.16, Tobacco/Smoking Sales, Use, and Licensing as it pertains to retail tobacco stores. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a fact that in recent decades, there are fewer tobacco smokers than years before, but people do, who do smoke, want to buy those products locally, and there are a number of stores. To this point, what our municipal code disallows is the sale of tobacco products in attached buildings for the reason, sensible, that if people are smoking in there, then even the most extraordinary HVAC systems will not remove that smoke from the apartment upstairs or the smell to the unit, the commercial unit next door. But there are a number of those buildings where we still allow, it's legal but nonconforming, for the sale of tobacco products, and here's the problem, those can't, if they no longer jive, how do they sell this property? How do you ever get out of that business? You never do, you never sell it. So we thought we'd lay some conditions on this, and the conditions are, you can't smoke in those, you can sell the tobacco there, but you can't smoke in them, and that has to be maintained and obviously policed. So what's before you tonight are two companion ordinances. One would change the municipal code, Chapter 64, and the other would change the UDO in line with that, because we, as you know, we came through here not too long ago and had some discussion about whether to allow for free, whether to allow for the sale of tobacco products if it's not in a freestanding building. So that's what this is, we're coming back to that discussion, and the last ordinance in this trilogy addresses the interests of these two gentlemen who are sitting, have been sitting here patiently all night, who want to have that business, a tobacco business in a attached store, but need support on these two to begin with. So we recommend your approval.
Counsel. No comments. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
Ordinance 2023-006 passes on first reading. I'd take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
Ordinance 2023-006 had second reading waived. Then moving on to number seven, ordinance 2023-007, amending Chapter 23, Unified Development Ordinance, Article 7, Supplemental District Regulation, Subsection 7.1, 7.02, permitted zoning districts and setback requirements, comma, as it pertains to retail tobacco stores. I read the comma. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved. Second?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight eye?
Ordinance 2023-006 had second reading waived. Then, moving on to number seven, ordinance 2023-007 amending Chapter 23 Unified Development Ordinance, Article 7 Supplemental District Regulation, subsection 7.1, 7.02, permitted zoning districts and setback requirements, comma, as it pertains to retail tobacco stores. I read the comma. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favor. City manager?
So, as this is a proposed revision to our UDO, it requires a public hearing according to the UDO. A public hearing was held before the Planning and Zoning Commission, just before the holidays. To permit the sale of tobacco products within an attached commercial building, providing no smoking, was a lot on the premises. Same point. We recommend your, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended this, and we recommend that you support their recommendation.
Comments, questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight eye?
Second reading was waived for ordinance 2023-007. Now, number eight, ordinance 2023-008 approving a special use permit for a retail tobacco store at 901 Lucinda Avenue, Jabaril Shalat?
Close enough, yeah.
Well, what is it? No, 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 not close enough.
Jabaril Slat.
Jabaril Slat. All right. Apologize for that. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Smith. City manager?
I mentioned the petitioners are here in the audience tonight. This is the location that we're building to, at 901 Lucinda Avenue. The, since you've approved the prior ordinances, you can proceed to act on this. The proposed changes would ban smoking in this particular tenant space, not allow an expansion of that space without an amendment to special use permits. So, there are some protections here. There's adequate parking to the east and north sides of the building, all the other things that we expect of a business of this type moving into any strip center are met. The planning commission recommended your approval. We pass that along to you with our support.
Counsel, comments, questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?[1367.01]